Good morning. I call to order the July 2nd, 2019 meeting for the Celine County Board of Commissioners. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick.
Here.
Commissioner Sparks.
Here.
Commissioner Vedrickson.
Here.
Commissioner Wees.
Here.
Commissioner White.
Here.
I ask that you please stand and join me in a flag salute followed by a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We now move to the public forum portion of our meeting where citizens may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, items that are pertaining to items that are not on today's agenda. Does anyone wish to address the commission? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for regular business. Item number one.
Approve agenda for public forum as presented.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we take off, well, first of all, take off item number four, and then with that approve the agenda for the public forum as presented.
I second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve today's agenda eliminating item number four. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion does carry. Move to item number two.
Approval of county commission minutes for June 11th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of June 11th, 2019 as presented.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the county commission minutes for June 11th, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number three.
Approval of county commission minutes for June 18th, 2019.
Mr. Chairman, I move we accept the county commission minutes of June 18th, 2019 as presented.
Second the motion.
Moved and seconded that we approve the minutes for June 18th, 2019. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item number five.
RFA 156-19 bid award for farm lease with Rick Lamer, livestock and expo director.
Good morning, Rick.
Good morning. This is a request for action to consider awarding one three-year cash farm lease contract to commence March 1st, 2020, and end February 28th, 2023, for Celine County farm land located at south half, northeast quarter, 116-3, 80 acres tillable. Eight sealed bids were opened Wednesday, June 19th, 2019, at 3:00 PM, with the highest bidder being Brandon Klinsman at $98.75 per acre for a total of $7,900 per year. Alternatives for action are to award the bid or deny the bid. Staff recommends awarding bid to Brandon Klinsman for a three-year cash farm lease at $98.75 per acre to commence March 1st, 2020. Proceeds from this lease will be deposited in the farm account.
Okay. Rick, I've got your legal description of that property. Where is it on the map?
That's right there. It's out on South Ohio and, I believe, McReynolds, that blue outline property there.
And the crossroad there is what, Schilling or Magnolia?
Salem'sburg.
Schilling.
Salem'sburg Road.
Well, it's on down south. It's not the property. That's why I'm asking, because it's not the property that I thought it was. And it's a total of, what's that, say?
80 acres.
Okay. Questions, mistresses?
One question, Rick. The expired lease, can you remember the amount that was for?
The lease that expires February 28th, 2020, is, he's paying 150 an acre.
And also, you had, what, eight or nine?
I had eight bids.
And the lowest?
The lowest bid was, I believe, 65 an acre.
So, do we have any say in what they want to plant on there, anything like that?
We do. They have to approve certain things with us. I think, I think the gentleman that's taken over this lease is going to put an alfalfa field there, so, which, before it was alfalfa, and it was a really nice alfalfa field. I think right now it's, it's half wheat and half alfalfa.
And he's projecting that he'll put all in alfalfa.
Yeah.
Okay. Further questions? Any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we award the bid to Brandon Klinsman for a three-year cash farm lease to commence March 1st, 2020.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 156-19 bid award for farm lease to Brandon Klinsman for a three-year cash farm lease. Further discussion? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion does carry.
Thanks.
Thank you, Rick. Item number six.
RFA 157-19 Microsoft licenses with Brad Bowers, committee, computer technology director.
Good morning, Brad.
Good morning. Information Technology this morning is requesting permission to expend $36,172.38 on Microsoft licensing. The licensing requested for the, is for the Windows Server 2019 data center licensing, which includes 268 Windows client access licenses. We are also requesting funding in order to purchase the Windows 2019 SQL Server database license, including 75 Windows SQL client access licenses. We received a government contract price quotes for this licensing from the three sources as follows. CDWG was the low bid for the Windows 2019 data center license. That will include the 268 Windows client access licenses for $18,508.38. PCMG was the low quote for the 2019 SQL Server Standard Edition with 75 SQL client access licenses. Their, their quote was $17,664. The, the low quote was from CDWG for the Windows data center license, and the low quote for the SQL Server licensing was from PCMG. Alternatives for action is to approve the, approve the request as presented, deny the request, or send staff back for more research. Staff recommends expending $36,172.38 for Microsoft licenses, $18,508.38 with CDWG, and $17,664 with PCMG, who have the low quotes. Celine County's critical application software, all run on Microsoft Windows servers. Our application, our current application server operating systems will become unsupported by Microsoft in January of 2020. That current version is Windows Server 2008 R2. The majority of this expenditure, $19,500, was being requested in the 2020 TIP budget. The Register of Deeds Technology Fund, the County Clerk Technology Fund, and the County Treasurers Technology Fund have been identified as funding sources for this project. The county treasurer will contribute $6,006,0934 from the Treasurers Technology Fund, and the county clerk will contribute $6,121.96 from the clerks' technology fund, and the Register of Deeds will contribute $23,441.08 from their technology fund. If this funding is authorized for this project via the department technology funds, we can remove the funding for the 2020 TIP budget. All three departments will benefit from the license purchase, as each department's application server will require this licensing. There will be, in the budget impact area, there will be no impact on general fund or any funds that levied, that levy ad valorem taxes. Three auxiliary funds will be utilized to fund this request for action: County Treasurers' Technology Fund, County Clerks' Technology Fund, and the Register of Deeds Technology Fund.
Tell me why, there are two separate requests here, and they wouldn't be combined into one. Tell me the difference.
The difference, the, the Windows 2019 data center license will, will allow us to install operating system applications on our application servers. The SQL Server is a database technology, and that's a specific, specific application that we utilize. Our, our finance and accounting application uses that techno, that backend technology, tasks, some other ones as well.
So, it's, it's actually two totally separate issues, unrelated, that there is no cost savings that could be secured by, by rolling this into one, one bid?
They're both required.
I see.
As well as the client access licenses. Whenever someone connects to a Windows SQL Server database, they have to have what's called a client access license.
Okay. Further questions?
Oh, one question, Brad. I might have missed it, but is, what's the lifespan of this license?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna say that we're gonna get six to seven years out of this before we have to expend more money. As I said, the, the application servers today have the Windows 2008 R2 licensing on them today, and so, that's been about, you know, 11 years. So, I'm, I'm saying, you know, conservatively, we're gonna get six to seven years out of this, probably more, but...
Does every office use this? I mean, does pretty much every office use this, have to use it?
Yes. In the, in the case of the Windows 2019 data center licenses, each computer that logs onto our network has to have a client access license. So, yes, every department will utilize that particular part of the license that I'm requesting. The SQL Server side will not be used by every department. Only those departments that, well, I take that back. Every department does pay their bills. They submit their, they submit their accounts payable stuff through this application server. So, yes, every, every department will use the SQL Server side as well.
Okay. And so, can I ask, why in the county, then, is it that it's like these three technology funds from these three, only three departments are funding this, and not a little bit from every department in the courthouse?
I would say the, the best answer to that is, is these three departments, statutorily, have access to charge an extra fee in order to, in order to establish these funds. Statutorily, the, the funds are designed to store information that's critical to those 2020 was gonna be a difficult budget year, and I know that probably 19-5 isn't a lot to take off of that, but we thought this could be a, we could, we thought this could be a good way to fund this, this request. And, and the clerk, and the treasurer, and the, and the register of deeds stepped up and said, "You bet, we'll help you out." And we're, we're very grateful for that.
Yep. Well, thank you. I mean, I just wanted to ask that.
And just to kind of back that question up, is that the, the three departments that are, that are contributing here, those numbers don't necessarily add up to this $18,508 or the $17,664, is that correct, or?
Yeah, the, all three of them do.
They, they do add up to that total?
That total.
That 35, 36,000?
36,000.
Okay, there, there it is. I didn't see that at first.
Yeah, 36,172.38, yep.
Okay. Further questions from commissioners? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for possible action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase of Microsoft licensing as listed in RFA 157-19.
Second the motion.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 157-19 Microsoft licensing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brad. Item number seven.
RFA 159-19 flood financing with Darren Fischel, road and bridge administrator.
Good morning, Darren.
Good morning, commissioners. This is a request for action for the Celine County Road and Bridge to access to the Special Highway Fund to purchase aggregates to repair roads damaged by recent flooding. Celine County has or will be expending its entire 2019 budget line item for aggregate in its normal operational budget. Due to the severity of the recent flooding, additional funds are needed to repair roads. Celine County Road and Bridge is also requesting approval to authorize overtime for its road and bridge maintenance personnel to start working on Saturdays. With harvest beginning, it is imperative that Celine County restore its roads as quickly as possible. Approving overtime shifts on Saturday will assist in this process. The alternatives for action are approve the request as presented, two, deny the aggregate request and approve the overtime for Saturdays, three, approve the aggregate request, deny the overtime on Saturdays, four, deny the request, five, other. The staff is recommending to approve the RFA as presented. The approved, the budget impact would be the approved 2019 road and bridge operating budget will not be impacted by the aggregate request, as the Special Highway Fund is a separate, non-budgeted fund. The overtime will impact the road and bridge operating budget, but will not exceed the approved budget amount. The impact to the Special Highway Fund is not known at this time, as road repairs are still being assessed.
Darren, have you taken any action or, or done anything to request the rain stop?
That is not within my authority.
That was my attempt at being, to try to bring some humor to this situation. Sorry. I understand it. I mean, I've spent a lot of time in the last couple of weeks with the road and bridge department in various areas, traveling the roads, looking at the bridges, watching $10,000 wash away that had just been spent and hadn't even been paid for yet. I, I totally understand your requests here. That having been said, I will allow other commissioners to speak or questions.
Well, it's a little scary to give you a blank check, but I understand that, that you will be frugal and prudent with the, the funds and...
Sure. And let me explain that a little bit, if I may. The 127 account, which is the Road and Bridge Special Highway Improvement Fund, is the fund that has money in it that was rolled over dollars from our road and bridge leftover funds. So, we're only gonna use it to purchase aggregates, and any money that's left over is gonna get paid back, plus any FEMA reimbursement we may get will go back into that account.
But that could be a couple of years down the road, right? As I understand how FEMA...
FEMA, maybe, yes.
Yeah. The aggregate, is that, is that this AV3? Is that what they call?
AV3 and rock, sand.
Further questions for Mr. Fischel? Comments?
Do you have, I mean, what was the actual budgeted amount for the 2019 budget, and how much have you actually spent on that budget?
Our budgeted amount for all three aggregates was 705,000, and we have spent 360,000 currently. The, the one thing, too, is, that may sound like a lot of money, but our contractual haul line item has been depleted, and so, if you're talking about 60-40, you know, we really only have about 180,000 or 190,000 to buy aggregates. So, just to kind of expound on that a little bit, if, if we, if we work Saturdays, also, our overtime line item is $5,000 in the red because of the harsh winter. If we, if we start paying overtime, which we're gonna have to anyway this winter, because it's only half over, then there's only one other place to take those dollars from, and, which is the large, larger ones, which is the aggregate line items. So, my intent is just to pay for the aggregates that we need. So, we're halfway through the year. We've already spent half, so I anticipate that to be increased more.
Okay. Well, I, I think this emphasizes the fact that we're, our, your ability to carry money over from one year to the next when it comes to that special road and bridge project, highway fund.
Working Saturdays will also help cut down on the, on the needs for those aggregates, because if we can get out there and get the aggregate retrieval out of the ditches and reuse some of that aggregate, that's less that we have to purchase to put on the road. We'll still have to supplement it, but it, it'll be less.
I think it also shows the public that we are, we're making a concerted effort to get this behind us and get it fixed back up in a quick hurry.
And, and when, when you said that, it just popped another question, is that if, if this is pretty much to do with the, oh, the harvesting deal, and the setback in another week, harvest will be over with, but it's, you look at it, how many weeks do you look at doing this after the harvest is done, to help fix these roads?
Weather dependent, of course.
Okay, yep, gotcha.
It'd take at least a month.
Okay.
Of just, just people going out and getting that aggregate back. The ditches are still full.
Yep.
Whether it's harvest or not, we say harvest, because, you know, that's one of the things that's important to our rural community, but, but the ditches are still full and plugged and choked, and so, getting those out is extremely important, whether...
Yep.
Well, with a, a late wheat har, wheat harvest, we're gonna be 30 days away from a fall harvest practically, you know, so it's gonna be right on top of each other. So, Mr. Manley, would you like to comment on any of this?
Well, yeah, we, we did put some numbers together for, to answer your question, Commissioner Wees. We are looking at about $350,000 above and beyond our normal budget. The, the budgeted aggregates and the budgeted hauling adds up to about 975,000, so you're looking at about 30% of our normal budget is because of flood damage, so...
Well, if, if anything good came out of the flooding would be the fact that it's given road and bridge and, and engineering a chance to identify areas that maybe need a different type of improvement to them, and we can address that in the future and maybe mitigate some of these things in the future.
I've been speaking with emergency management just yesterday, wanting some areas to mitigate, which maybe we could spend, get some dollars to make some improvements so we didn't have to repair, yes.
All right. Further questions, comments? Is there any public comment? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for action, or if there is any action. It's just an update.
I guess there is an action. Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the request of RFA 159-19.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 159-19 pertaining to flood financing. Any further comments, questions? Not? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion does carry. We'll move on to item number eight.
Road and Bridge update with Darren Fischel, road and bridge administrator.
My update was fairly simple. For about the last two and a half months, we have been working on flood damage. About May 8th, I believe, that this started, there were three separate, what I would consider floods, plus two flash flooding events. This is Simpson Road, looking north towards the River Bridge. I've never seen it quite that high before. This is a bridge structure we have down on Centennial Road. The bridge didn't get washed out, but there, again, that's where it takes aggregates, because all of it's in the river or the creek. This is also Simpson Road, looking from the other direction. This is some of what I would call flash flooding events. The difference between this is just slow water over time, and this is a lot of water in a very short period of time. This, this is on Brown Hill Road over, out by Brookville. This has since been repaired. This is Gypson Valley. This is what Gypson Valley Creek does. When it, when it floods, it sheet floods over the whole, the whole creek area, and then over time, these aggregates just get washed out into the field. So, we'll go retrieve those much as we can with an excavator. We'll go out there, and it's important to get those, because the normal drainage of the roadway for the road is, is down here, so it's, it's important to get this out of here, so that when it, it's just normal, it, it still does drain instead of pooling This is the flash flooding we get here, where we have a culvert, and it gets washed out here on the corners, and then we have, this whole road got washed out. These things we have to go in and repair. And it's, this is an earth road, and it's just dirt, but it's time. This is some of the other, the debris that comes up against our bridges and structures. We have to go remove that, otherwise, the next time it floods, it starts to erode the structure, the black, the back walls and the piers. This is a low-water crossing, and it has been tried to be safeguarded from flood with, with asphalt and, but, you know, water's powerful, and when it comes over the road, it, it's gonna do what it wants. Here's some other areas where it's tried to been safeguarded with some paving. Culverts get washed out. Culverts get washed out. This is on Donmire Road. I received this picture, and if you look, if you look here, this is all nice, glassy, smooth, but when I saw this picture, I was, I saw this and I thought, there's something going on here. So, as we watched it go down, this was a box culvert that was in there that got washed out. So, if somebody had happened to drive through that, they would have been in some, would have been serious injury if, if not loss of life.
Wow.
And this, this is already, the county engineer has this under contract, I believe the work's scheduled to begin Monday.
Is there an anticipated completion date on that?
If the weather's good, I would say six to eight weeks, but...
That's not as long as I thought. That's for certain.
That's not bad. I mean, for, to get somebody to come in there and build that. This is on Niles Road. This is where we had two culverts washed out, creating a void under the road. We were fortunate, we have a relationship with the manufacturer of the culverts, and I called him, and they were just switching over to make the gauge of culvert we needed and put us at the top of the list. So, we were able to get this very large culvert in, in about a week and a half, which is pretty short time. You know, usually four to six weeks is, is what you would expect. And this just shows the compaction and then the asphalt, and that road's open today. We got that, that was open Saturday. Very heavily traveled road for the farming community.
I'd like to comment on this one if I may. I spent some time last week with the, the crew that was doing that job. I was out there on a one afternoon for about two and a half to three hours and then went back the next morning after it had rained and pretty well did away with everything that they'd done the day before. But my, my point of the conversation is, they worked extremely hard as a crew. They didn't, one of them have a job to do specific to the truck driving or whatever it is. They all rolled their sleeves up and wrestled that thing and worked their tails off to get that project completed. They worked extremely hard and worked together well as a team to get that project done as quickly as they did because I think there was actually, in a five day span, there were two days of rain that just totally did away with whatever they had already accomplished the day before, so. But they didn't complain, they just stood right in there and, and did the job, so.
Thank you.
Tell them thanks.
So, this is Gypson Valley Road, looking south towards Gypson. This is one of those mitigation areas that we're going to try to see if we can apply for. Every time Gypson Valley Road floods, this road is washed out. It is since been repaired. It will be open, oh, probably here in about an hour or so. They've still got to put the aggregate on it. This is, we did this, this work Saturday also. We'll get the aggregates on it, but this is about 20 to 25,000 dollars worth of work in aggregates. So, if, if that area could be paved, and we have a couple of them that every time the water goes over it, we have to go back, it would, sure would be a good place for some mitigation. This is Kingman Road. This is just on the northwest corner of Gypson. This is also one of those areas that gets washed out through the flood every time.
If I'm not mistaken, that area doesn't really even have to flood. It just, the creek gets out there and other areas, it's one of the first areas to wash out no matter what goes on.
Right, yeah. But, you know, just some pavement there. You know, it's all sensitive because of the flood. You know, you really got to be careful with elevations because you don't really want to create any backwater for anybody. This is a county map that shows at the height of the flood, all of the roads that we had closed, and it turned out to be about 58 miles. We did get it down to about 10 miles, and then we had some more flooding, and right now it's sitting at about 25 or 26. This is our current show of what we have. I got folks up here, or started with the retrieval. These all, these roads are still somewhat passable, but you sure wouldn't want to go down if you didn't know. That's, that's the main reason they're closed, is to protect the traveling public. But the barricades are set out, so, and when people call, we respond and go, you know, if I need to get to a field or something, we do the best we can. So, this shows what I call the May 2019 flood. We have currently about 250,000 dollars total in labor, equipment, and materials. I expect this, this material number to go up considerably because that's really all that's left for this, is to haul the aggregates when we're about 70% complete. This is what I'm calling the June 23rd flood. And so, this we really haven't gotten into yet, but you can see because of the timing of the flood, because it was so close to harvest, we had to just go put material on roads to make them passable so folks could get through, and that's what's going to make this one more expensive. Because when you can go out and do the retrieval and work the road, it's less out of pocket, it's more budgeted. And when I say budgets, that means by our forces. You know, rock, you have to write a check for, and everything costs money, but if we can do it the other way, it's less expensive than doing it this way. So, we're hoping to get transition this flood event into going and retrieving the material to cut the cost. And, you know, the sun will always shine after the storm. We try to remain optimistic. We see some really good things happening out there too.
Darren, thank you very much for your update. It's a tough one this time around, that's for certain. So, we haven't experienced it like this for what, about five, six, eight years?
2007, I think, was the last, the last major flood.
Okay. Any other comments from the commissioners? Thank you. We'll move on to item number nine.
Senior Services Update with Rosie Walter, Department of Senior Services Director.
And good morning, Rosie.
Okay. The advisory council met. We met on April 26, and the discussion included the stats. We did a price increase of, from $4.75 to $5. And then, we've done a huge survey. We sent it out to all of the patrons and came back with some changes, so we've implemented those changes as well. And then, of course, the subcommittee meets every month and we review stats. And then below, you will see the stats. It's only through May. I haven't had time to put June together, but it's, it's pretty consistent. We have some highs and some lows, and hopefully some menu changes while also, you'll see some increases from that. Hannah, Andrew, and I, we put together 11 different foundation grants and submitted those, and from that, we've received quite a bit of response. So, from the grants, we've received 344,700, and that includes the money that the commission has set aside for us, and then some private donations that we have received that we're going to utilize towards all the different projects within the senior center. And then down below, you can kind of see the list of projects that we have going. The roof, the grading, tuck pointing, wall repair and irrigation, windows, the HVAC, the restrooms and plumbing, kitchen dishwasher, meals on wheels, drive-through. Of course, we have not received funding for all of that, so Andrew and I have met and kind of gone through what is the most important things that we need to get completed. And from that, we've talked about the roof, you know, but we have an insurance adjuster coming over next week to look at the roof and then the HVAC unit, so I will update you as I get that information. The windows, unfortunately, we can't afford right now with the funding received. The grading is something that I think we probably, I don't know, we might have to do, we're just going to wait and see. Get some estimates, get some people out there to kind of look and see if we actually need the grading, how expensive it is, and can we afford to do it. So, we are getting some bids on some different things. The restrooms and plumbing, we are going to move forward with that. In the kitchen, we are going to move forward with that. The commission had approved that previously. The rest we will get in front of you with a request for a proposal. The meals on wheels drive-through, at this time, we cannot afford to do that. I really, really am disappointed about that, but hopefully in the future, we can work towards that. Other projects that we have going that just kind of fall in line with this is the dining room floor. You know, underneath that vinyl floor, we have that terrazzo for, which is beautiful. So, if we can get that vinyl scraped up and have that restored, the terrazzo, it would be beautiful. The dining room cabinets, if you've been over there, you've seen that. Then the dining room, we have curtains because, I don't know if the doors fell off or, or what, but we have curtains covering the cabinets, drawers that no longer slide, so, and cabinet surfaces that are now leaking and have absorbed a lot of fluid, so we're in the process of restoring those or getting new ones put in. Okay, contracts that we have going right now. Norris Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging, I'm currently working with them. I have the contract approved by Mike Montoya County Council, so I'm hoping within this next month, I can get that new lease signed with them. And then Sunflower Adult Day Services, we do an annual lease, so we are working on that too. Mislinious items is, we did have the health fair on May 17. We had 42 different vendors or booths that came in, and it was a huge success. Jamie was there. Yeah, I mean, it was incredible. They bought, pre-bought tickets for food. We did a survey. It was overwhelmingly successful. Hannah, I'll give her props. She applied for a grant for $2,000 that was able to buy weather radios, phyllo lives for everybody that came through the door, and first aid kits. So, yeah, just about everybody got a prize. And then right now, we're getting ready for the Alzheimer's Walk, so from everybody that attended the health fair, I'm trying to get them signed up, and we're going to do one huge group that says United Against Alls on the front. We have one sponsor already that's going to pay for our individual shirts. All the logos of the booths or the people that want to participate are going to be on the back of the shirts, and we're going to all walk together. Fan program, right now, I had a volunteer that came in and told me that he had two patrons for Meals on Wheels that has no air conditioning, and they were struggling with the heat. So, with that, he asked me what we could do, so we got ahold of the health department, and they put me in touch with the Salvation Army, and I was able to get 30 fans from them. Well, that 30 fans, I went through in one day. We offered them to the volunteers to take out to all the Meals on Wheels participants that they thought would benefit from it, if either they don't have air or they can't afford to turn on their air conditioning. So, altogether, right now, I've gone through about 60 fans in three working days. I have applied for a grant out at Walmart, and I haven't heard back yet if we'll get that, but hopefully we will.
Okay. I have a question, and probably Andrew more directed to you, but I, I see back up here in the grants and projects, there's $100,000 from Sling County. Where does that come from? I don't remember us talking about anything about that.
Sling County has allocated roughly $100,000 in our CIP account. That's been in there in years past. It's just sitting there waiting for these projects to happen.
Specifically for senior services?
Yes.
Okay. Also, on the roof, I know that a few weeks ago, in the anticipated projects down the line, it was an $80,000 request, and then it was, found out that we didn't need that 80,000 because the, we found the drain problem, but now I see 76,000 back on here?
That's still the original 80,000. I think that's just a better number. 80,000 was just an estimate. The roof is older. It will eventually need to be replaced, but we, we had a leak that we were running into in the senior services building. We found the cause of the leak was not the roof. We originally thought it was the roof, so we're not recommending replacing the roof right now, but it needs to stay on here on the radar as something that we need to address in five, 10 years. I think that's probably about the estimated life has remaining on it, but we did fix the leak. It was in the, the drain.
So, as far as the immediate radar goes, that roof, that 76,000 can probably be removed from?
That's correct.
From this one? So, that would take that down to roughly 625,000 or something like that, or a little over 650,000? Okay. Questions of Rosie?
Couple comments. First, I want to applaud you, Rosie, for how aggressive you've gone out for grants and looking for outside sources for funding for the senior center. Secondly, the, the cost of the meal increased June 1st, is that correct?
Well, originally, we had said June 1st. Well, the kitchen staff came back and we got to looking at the menu, and we realized that you couldn't just increase just the price of the meal because if you bought things individually, the same things that's included in the full hot meal, it was cheaper. So, we had to re-put that out with the increase just across the board pretty much, so that we'd be consistent with everything. Because, you know, we had increased just the full hot meal. Well, you can get an entree and then get your side things, and it would still be cheaper. So, we just increased everything across the board. But then, we had already put that out, so we had to re-put it out and let people know that July 1st, and then the new price, pricing.
So, it has just now been implemented?
Yesterday was the first day.
What is your feedback been from the patrons?
I would say we were really busy, but, you know, yesterday was lasagna, so you're going to be busy anyway.
But did your...
I didn't hear any negative comments. I really didn't, so, you know, and it's a quarter increase, so hopefully you won't.
And originally, you had stated, I think, that you increased from $1.75 to $5. Did I just hear that wrong? I know it's 4.75.
4.75 to 5, yeah.
4.75, I know that. I must have just, my hearing aid was buzzing probably. Okay, further questions, comments?
Thank you. Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move along. Item number 10.
RFA 155-19 Dell laptops and PCs with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Good morning.
Good morning, Annie.
And Sherry.
And Sherry.
Come on, Sherry.
So gracious that she comes with me today. And before I go into this, Andrew and Brad, who agreed to stay through this just in case there's further questions, I appreciate everything they did. This was quite a little process for us. We thought it was going to be simple, wasn't simple. She questions every little penny, so we all met and they all came to the office, and thank goodness she watches every little penny. So, I want to thank everybody for the time that they put in for this. So, this is a request for us, Community Corrections, to purchase 29 OptiPlex 360s MT computers and four Dell Latitude 3590 laptops. We currently use Windows 7, which I understand Sherry said is no good and going to stop being effective soon, and, you know, I'm still that old dinosaur. I have no idea, so I'm like, okay. So, when it ends, January 14th of 2020, that can certainly concern us too. So, it could cause us vulnerable to viruses and other security risks. So, upgrading the current computers to Windows 10 was explored. I mean, you can read it. They are five to seven years old. Many of them would require additional RAM in order to upgrade to Windows 10. The cost of additional RAM and the upgrades to Windows 10 for these computers would be $6,800. Like I said, we had our Studio F contract, Devin in and Brad and Andrew, and we talked about expense and the age of the computers and the upgrade of the computers and what we really needed. Thanks to Brad, he got quotes for us, and Andrew looked at all our line items of what the cost would be. So, the total cost for 29 computers is 83660 each, which equals 24,26140, and four laptops at 83515 each, which is $3,340 and $60, for a total of 27602. We are going to use our reimbursement dollars to pay for these computers and the upgrades of the software, and so we're asking permission to move forward and purchase those things and get that, that kind of stuff going. Our reimbursement budget, you know, is a nice, healthy budget that we've been collecting since... since 1980s. This is no county dollars. It's straight grant funds and other things, and reimbursements on services, collection of UAs from other agencies that we do contracts with, those kind of things. So we're seeking permission to purchase twenty-nine computers, the four laptops, in the amount of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and two dollars.
And again, I want to reemphasize, it's not county money. It's, we're granting you permission to spend grant money that you have already received, applied for and received. Further questions from commissioners?
Does this fall into the situation? I know that you have your support company doing this. Will they come in and do all the upgrades and changes to all these computers that you're doing?
Yes.
Or will that be an extra charge from them?
No. Well, we pay him a set monthly contract fee, so we'll continue to pay that, but he's not going to charge us extra, I think I'm saying this right, to come in and do all that extra work, because we already have a contract with him on a monthly fee.
Okay. I didn't know if that was going to be up and above, or if they take care of it.
Yeah, so that's not additional. She's a pretty good whiz here, too, so believe me, she can move around and probably catch up some of the work that he may not be able to move as quick.
Gotcha.
I mean, you know.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I know at one time, Community Corrections, their IT department, or issue, the way they used it, was not hooked into the county's system. Is that still the case, or?
They do connect back to our system and run a couple of applications.
Am I correct, though, that at one time, that wasn't the case, or where am I thinking?
No, I, they've always, they've always gotten their email from, from us, but just recently, we've started running the full court application, which is the court records management application, and, and they pay some bills as well. And that's just been within the last three years, I think, so.
Okay. That's, that's where I was coming from on that, I think. So, all right. Thank you. Further questions from commissioners? If not, we'll bring it back to the commission for action.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the purchase of twenty-nine PCs and four laptops with Microsoft's Office software in the amount of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and two dollars, as requested by staff.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 155-19 Dell laptops and PCs for a cost of twenty-seven thousand six hundred and two dollars. Is there any further comments or questions from, from the commission? Hearing none? I will ask for all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to item number 11.
RFA 158-19 KDOC Physical Year 20 Behavioral Health Revised Budget and MOU with CKF with Annie Grievous, Community Corrections Director.
Thank you.
And good morning again, Annie.
Good morning. This is an annual thing. It's a grant that we've always gotten when we apply for it. It's, money's released by DOC. They set aside three million every year. They never increase it, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me, but, you know, that's what they do. And usually, between three-point-five and four million are asked. And so it isn't surprising to me when we take a cut on this grant. This is, as you know, we've been talking about mental health and those services and everything we're doing lately, and so everybody is seeing an increase in those clients that admit that heat that hit that population. But we're still very, very grateful, because the grant does fund three staff. It funds two in my office, and one is CKF. And the CKF, one works directly with us, attends drug court, facilitates clients' entry into services, offers peer counseling and other things. So it is a good deal with us, and it's an agreement we've had with CKF for years. So I probably said all that when you allowed us to apply for the grant, but in it, we got funded less a little bit. We applied for two forty-four, two hundred and twenty-seven, and eighty-four cents. We got a reduction of fifteen thousand one hundred, so the total amount we will be receiving is two hundred and twenty-nine thousand one hundred and twenty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents. So Sherry's drawn up where that, those dollars come from, and they tell you where they're cutting you, which is kind of nice. Voucher funds, they took thirteen thousand eight hundred. That sounds like a lot, but what they did was they looked at our past year's spending, and it was less than what we projected we would spend, which I find a little odd, because it seems like we're paying a lot of dollars for the mental health population and substance abuse, but it must have been less. They must not need it as much. Plus, we've written some other grants. We've sought other funds, and so we've probably tapped into some of that. So it's a, it's a good cut. I don't have a problem with that. If we didn't use it, I mean, I hate the fact that you lose it if you don't use it, but that's okay, and we're not going to be hurting any way with that. The other one was training. They didn't want to pay for four hundred and twenty dollars worth of training. No big deal. That's a small amount. And the other one was replacing a seven-year-old laptop for eight hundred and eighty dollars. We're going to cover that, too. So the only thing that is different is that voucher funds, I've got the dollars in multiple funds, so if we need them, we'll tap into those. But I would project, at this point, because of our trend of spending, we may not spend as much from this grant, which is fine, too. So the total reduction is fifteen thousand one hundred dollars. DOC has us come in front of the county commission to sign off on a revised amended budget. So that's what we're here today, to do today on this one piece, is to get your approval and signature on the revision, based on the modifications.
Questions of Mrs. Grievous? Seeing none, I'll ask for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we sign the memorandum of understanding with CKF and the revised behavioral health budget as submitted.
Second.
Been moved and seconded that we approve RFA 158-19 KDOC F year ending 20 Behavioral Health Revised Budget and MOU with CKF. Further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. The motion does carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you.
That concludes our, today's agenda. Under other business, I want the public to know that we, on July the 16th, our regular meeting will consist primarily of jail, an RFQ for, for jail qualifications, for architectural firms to bring us suggestions and estimates on what we're going to do about our jail overcrowding situation, whether it be a new jail, or a revised, restructured jail, as it sits over there now. So that having been said, there will be five firms that come in. They will be put into a time slot, one through five, and in fairness for that situation, we're going to draw for their time slots in open session now, so that no one has an unfair advantage, or, or, you know, to be first, and the guy that goes last gets to hear everybody else's proposal and so forth. So Andrew, is there something you wish to add to that? Am I stating it correctly?
We'll be doing this, we'll be drawing twice. We have a morning session and an afternoon session, so we're going to do one round to do the morning drawing, and then we'll put everything back in the box and do it again for the morning, or for the afternoon session.
Yes, and to clarify that further, round one is a public presentation with the commissioners and all members of the public. Round two, which is a further interview, will be for the jail committee only, so. Okay, so.
Mr. Chair, can I just remind you that the meeting starts at eight and not nine?
Yes. That day will be at eight o'clock. No, that's not correct, because we found out there's a building authority meeting at eight o'clock, so we're going to have to go back to our regular nine o'clock start.
I got you.
Which will push us back as far as ending.
Okay. Good.
So at this time, I would like either Andrew or Hannah to bring it up, and each commissioner will draw a time slot. I assume you have the names in there?
I do. A little more clarification, each commissioner will draw one.
Right.
Monty will be the time slot number one. Commissioner Sparks will be time slot two. Chairman Vidrickson, three, four, and five.
Correct.
So that is how we're going to do this.
Do we need to get our?
Then we can reverse that on the second, the purple, second drawing.
Do we need to get our chief election officer involved in this process?
Yes, yes.
And no, no coin flips.
Well, this has been quite a deal of going through this process to try to figure it out and be fair to everyone, so. Big box.
Next time, can we pull straws?
At this time, for time slot number one, Monty has drawn.
Goldberg Group.
And time slot number two, Roger?
HMN Architects.
And time slot number three is Shive Hattery. Jim?
BG Consultants, number four.
Okay, and we will reverse the, the process. Excuse me, Mr. White.
One more. Trainer. Thank you.
To show, there we go. Now, Mr. White, you can draw first for time slot number one. We don't want you to be slighted and have to be fifth every time. Continue this little circus. Mr. White, your time slot number one.
Shive Hattery.
Commissioner White, or Commissioner Wees, I mean.
BG Consultants. They seem to be attached to me.
And time slot number three will be Goldberg. Commissioner Roger?
Trainer.
HMN Architects.
Okay, we have that process and procedure behind us. So is, Monty or, or Andrew, is there anything you wish to add about this process, when we're going to be doing it, type thing? We'll see everybody on the 16th, for sure. Hope we have more than the zero public that was here today, but we will allow our media partners to get this word out, along with our own media process that Hannah takes care of. So, does anyone else have any other announcements? Seeing none, I will take a motion for adjournment. So moved?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn today's meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. We will have an administrator's update immediately following this meeting, following a short break.
Thank you for your time.